...in here. See, we don't want everybody to hear right now for another minute. After a minute, we're on video. It's not that bad, pretty short one, actually, no.
Well, after you look, there's ten, um, there's nine items of our action and discussion, and I'm adding a ten.
There's five executive sessions.
We're gonna strike, we're gonna strike two and add one.
Okay.
Here we go. Strike the two on the backside and add them one in the front. No, striking two executive sessions and adding one more. But I'm gonna, oh, yeah, adding another executive session, so. Thank you. Anytime, John. Thank you. All right, I'd like. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We do have all five selectmen here, so we have a quorum. Could we please rise to do the Fledge of Allegiance?
The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible liberty and justice for all.
All right. Amendments to the agenda. I have one to add to action and discussion items, item J, Spirit of America Award. And would like to strike executive session number, Roman numeral nine, and executive session, Roman numeral ten. And we'll add executives, uh, we'll add one more executive session, and that would be for one MRSA, four oh five, six A Personnel and Public Works. Uh, is there any public comment this evening? No public comment. Onto the consent agenda.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Action item A, under action and discussion items A, and this is a Historic District Commission Ordinance. Is this something Paul was presenting, or? Oh, okay.
Do you want me to give you just sort of a basic idea?
Yeah, just kind of, yeah, give us an idea of what this is.
Um, it's, it's sort of a lot of verbiage to, to basically add to associate members to the Historic District Commission. I think the phrase that we actually dropped into the ordinance is something to the effect of, as well as two associate members.
Yeah.
We had some, in a, in a sort of a previous discussion at the commission level, we talked about adding some more language in there, talk about what specifically the associate members would do, or how they'd be defined, but we saw that in some of the other board ordinances in the town, like the planning board and stuff like that, they had, um, they just had the associate members listed in the ordinance and then used the board bylaws to describe more thoroughly what they do, and you guys will see and approve the bylaws once we have a draft of those done as well, so you'll have a look at that when that comes, probably within the next couple of months, but because we knew the town meeting warrant was, needed to be dealt with soon, we thought we'd try to.
So the underlying session is, section is the only change, the rest of it is identical?
Yep, everything else in the ordinance is the same, and we're working towards a, um, a larger suite of ordinance revisions, but that'll be town meeting 2016, we'll, we'll be back to talk to you about that later.
All right. At this point, I think we just have this presented to us on our, our list for our warrant, when we accept the warrant. We don't have to approve anything right now, we can't approve the ordinance, so. So we'll have it added.
We just have to vote to put it on?
Yeah, for the warrant, yeah, so when we get, when we're done our budgets and get the warrant, we'll have, we should have this as one of the warrant articles. Yeah, two weeks from today, probably.
Talk about that later.
Yes, yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
All set.
You guys have been sort of revamping or getting the historical commission back into action.
Yeah, yep, it had been sort of as necessary, and now we're doing it month, monthly regardless, and taking some good hard looks at some of the documents and trying to get consistent, and so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Eagle Scout presentation of Flagpole Project by Justin.
My name is Justin Levek, I'm from Troop 145, Durham, Maine, and the reason why I'm here is to present my Eagle Scout project. My Eagle Scout project is to work on the Veterans Memorial. Uh, some of the current issues are that last spring, our troop was asked to raise the flag, and the flag during the raising, the flag got caught on the pole, and I'd like to fix that, and not only that, it's not up to light, it's not up to the flag code by lighting, it's not lit properly at nighttime. Also, there's not enough poles to, the, flag the, all the military service flags, and I also wanna fix the general appearance of the Veterans Memorial, so my plan is to get two new twenty foot, twenty foot, five foot poles for the American and the state flag right here, and, um, four new eighteen foot poles for the service, service branch poles, right here. And, um, for the lighting, I like to, uh, there's, I have three options. We can either do a light on a utility pole, which is, which will tap into the street light account for the town, also, the next option is to, we can get our own pole, meter, and get a light, and have CMP install it, which would be a little bit less cost effective per month, so we just have to pay for electricity fee, and the last option is a solar light. And the next thing is, I'd like to create a pathway from the monument to the gazebo. And also, I'd like to have a electric, electricity outlet to the gazebo for events that need electricity, and also, I would like to rotate the gazebo for better alignment for the, the pathway, and before I rotate it, or, yeah, before I have to rotate it, I'll look at the, the foundation to make sure it'll, so I can rotate it. All right. I'll provide, as the project manager, so I'll be in charge of the whole project. I'll have labor, labor covered from the troop, have all the boys help out as volunteers, so labor will be free for this project. Um, I'll do some fundraising for it. Some of the project costs are, that the twenty foot poles cost around $625, and the eighteen foot poles cost a hundred dollars per pole. The cement to support the poles are just eighty pound bag of spent, costs four dollars. Now for lighting, the three options. I haven't quite gotten that far, but probably like six, 'cause there's six poles, so I'm thinking one bag per pole.
And it was. The mailbox really stays on one bag.
Okay, no, go ahead, no, I'm sorry. It was, it was four of the eighteen foot poles.
Yeah.
Now, the first lighting method, the cost, uh, this is the one where we can have CMP come and install a light on the pole, and all we have to pay is just a monthly fee in the, the streetlight account, which would be about fifteen to thirty dollars a month. And the second way, the second method is having CMP install a pole, meter, and a light fixture, which is a little bit more pricier, thirty-five, I mean, twenty-five to thirty-five hundred dollars for that, with the seven to eighteen dollar monthly fee for electricity. But with that, you have the meter for the electric outlet, which will, we can tap in for that. And the last method is a solar light, which I haven't really looked into much, but I'm assuming that there would be no monthly fee, because it's all solar. And for the pathway, um, the cost of, I'd get a, the cost of one bag of stone or gravel would be four dollars, and I'm assuming I'd need quite a few bags, so I'd have to figure out the cubic area to determine the total cost for that, and also, fifty foot roll of landscaping liner is, uh, ten dollars, to keep out the grass from growing in the pathway. And so all in all, depending on what light source you guys would like to pick, uh, it should cost around twenty-five to thirty-five hundred dollars, and like I said, I'll be doing some of the fundraising, but I'm asking the town to help me fund this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. What did we, what, what?
Three thousand?
We were suggesting three thousand, that we were looking to put towards the, uh, this project there this year. Of course, it hasn't been approved, it, we, it hasn't even been presented yet to the budget committee, uh, that'll happen probably Thursday night, um, and then it will have to go to the town meeting to approve the, the full, the budget. Before we'll know whether we can act, we will be able to actually provide any of the funds for that, but we have put in, uh, three, we're requesting three thousand.
And you don't know what happens on the town floor either, so.
Any, any questions for Justin?
How, how do you intend to move the gazebo?
I was gonna have all, all the guys, well, first I'm gonna look at the foundation, make sure I can actually lift it up safely, and if I, if so, I'll have all the guys go around each corner and pick up and just rotate it. We're not gonna move it, we're just gonna rotate it to align it better for the pathway.
You know, approximately how many, how, how far you have to move it, uh, how, like, a quarter of a circle, or ninety degrees, or how much it has to move?
I haven't had a chance to look, 'cause of the snow.
Okay.
So I'll probably have a better idea in the spring.
The snow over there?
I just, I, my concern is it's a very old structure.
I can't remember if it's, if it's actually sitting on pads, or if there was, those posts are actually in the ground, I don't remember how that went down. Maybe. Which, you really won't be able to tell till once the snow gets out of there, for sure.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I like you, I like you thinking.
Oh, I like the electrical part, I've, I've always thought we should have had some kind of electricity over there for bands or whatever, lighting, so.
And we could have it so that it could be, like, lofted, or?
Oh, yeah, so is, the current light isn't metered, we're just charged a flat rate, is that the, is that the case?
No, there's no, the only light over there is the streetlight.
The streetlight, that's not metered, that, we're, we're paid, we pay a flat rate, yeah, okay, so, so if we wanted to put electricity.
Right, it should, it's one of those things that if, if we're gonna do it, we should do it correctly, rather than, than the way that it's being done now, which is against every pro, flag protocol there is, so, you know.
I mean.
So it needs to be lit under, there's specific.
Right, it was the only, we can't do the electricity to the gazebo off the, off the street pole.
Off the existing pole, we'd have to put in another.
So we probably wouldn't cut it, so probably the second option.
And I will say, the first couple of times that they, we, when they started the memorial parades back up, they attempted to use some sort of PA system, um, to, 'cause they do a presentation type thing at, at the van stand, and it never worked. They, they, they ran into issues at, e- each time they tried it, and if we could get electricity to the van stand, that would be good, but that, how much did you say that wa, that would have been, that would almost double the cost of the project, correct?
Have you talked to CMP anybody yet? Ask if they'd help out?
Yeah.
Yeah? What'd they say?
Uh, they said that it costs around twenty-five.
You just got a price from them, did you ask them if they donate anytime, or?
I hadn't asked that, no.
I know, still there.
Well, that's an historic area, is there any issues of tw, turning it?
It would probably, he's, have we gone, it, actually, it would probably, we probably would have to go to the Historic District Commission just to get approval.
Yeah.
That's, that's true.
Question we'll have to ask, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Sounds like a great project.
Yeah.
Historic District Commission, actually, I, I have talked to them, I'm not sure if we discussed it when we met, but I have talked to them, and it is something that they'd like to look at.
Right.
The placement has happened, uh, most of the poles happened just recently, but it actually would, wouldn't be a bad idea.
So for the poles as well?
He's talking about actually rotating the gazebo.
So, but they would, they would prefer, they would like to review the placement of the poles as well.
Okay.
We definitely may get more aesthetic if it was feasible to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, when you get to that point, uh, just so I got a little background in some of that, when you get to, the snow goes and you can actually look it over, um, leaving out here at the office, or so, all my phone numbers on TV, give me a call, I'm Mark Blake, I come down, look at that way, so, you know, see where you are, 'cause I got a little background in that part of it, so maybe I can help you out, so.
All right.
Just pointers or whatever. I'm not sure how much I can lift up for you, but I. Let's be sorted out, load of the ground. That's right.
All right. Thank you very much for bringing this, um, when you, when the snow melts and you can get more, a better idea of what it's going to take and so on, uh, if you wanted to come back before us, and we can, we could review where we're at, and, um, kind of come up with a plan for how we, how we could accomplish some of this. I, I assume you probably, you're probably trying to target to get s, at least some of this done before the, before Memorial Day?
Correct.
Okay.
Sometimes I rule a thumb for.
I don't want the snow's gonna be gone before.
I'm not sure how deep you wanna go with your basis for your flags, but a rule is thumb for those, if you're using a sonar tube or something like that, I'm not sure what your plan is, but, uh, ten inch, twelve inch sonar tube, four feet deep is four to five bags, usually, you know, so just, that'll give you an idea for, for a little bit of planning. And there's, if you happen to go over and look at a bag, there's usually a number on there, it'll tell you how many cubic inches, yards, or whatever, depending on what you need, so.
All right.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The county needs approval from the board and the projects to continue the research, and, 'cause he, then he also has to present it to the council, down at Boy Scout Council.
Okay. You wanna make a motion, or somebody?
I, I would, I would make it so that it is pending that we get the approval on our funding.
They can go, go forward with the research, right?
Absolutely, I would, I would move that, uh, we approve, uh, Justin to go ahead with his research for this project.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. One question, would it be possible to get, uh, photocopies of that, uh, it would actually be helpful at our budget meeting.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you need it back? Do you have copies?
Good to see you telephoned around. Looking on it off and on.
Local people in CMP, my wife worked there fifteen years, we'll see if we can help them out there a little bit, or maybe, I don't know.
Always good to have connections everywhere.
All right, next on, next on the agenda is discussion on the Animal Control Officer. We have a, a temp, uh, what we could put in for an advertisement here, and I see that you did a, there's a.
Job description here, too?
There's, there's two advertisements, um, one's longer than the other, and one's in thinking, you know, MMA, and one's thinking newspaper.
The first one's MMA, that short one, right? That's what it looks like.
The longer one, the top one is MMA more. The bottom one is more for like a newspaper ad.
Wow, I see. I think that's what they have. Yep.
I think for the newspaper ones, don't we still need that equal opportunity affirmative action statement in there? Everything I see that goes into the paper has it, and I think we better, uh, I think it would be better to have that in there.
Shannon, they don't need it. Nope.
Any thoughts on, other than the equal opportunity, uh, section, any other?
Yeah, I like it.
Okay. So where do, where do we think we should put it? Obviously, the, the channel, the website, MMA, and probably one or two papers, I would suggest.
Trytown, do you think?
Trytown.
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah.
Trytown.
And would. Lewiston or Brunswick?
Yeah.
Yeah, Louis, Lewiston, probably up that way, I don't know, yeah.
Brunswick's at one or the other, or?
I think we typically do Lewiston, but, um, they, they both cover this area, so. Do we have a motion as far as placing this?
Do we have to specify where it's being placed?
It doesn't hurt.
Well, then you better, you better make the motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we place these ads, um, with the addition of adding the equal opportunity affirmative action employer to the newspaper style ad, and that we would post it on our town website, post it on the Durham Channel, at the, on the MMA job site, and the Lewiston Sun Journal, and Trytown.
All right.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. On the back, we have the job description.
It's the same one that we used before.
Yeah, one thing I would actually, um, this gives us a good idea, but I was wondering if we could get it into the format of all, we've kind of have a, a template for all of our jobs, and this, this was one that never got updated, 'cause we didn't, we didn't use it after we started updating the job descriptions, but it'd be kinda nice to have them all in the same format. As far as the, the.
Content.
Content, uh, anybody see anything that's, shouldn't be there, or that's glaringly missing?
Yeah, I thought it looked pretty thorough.
On descri, on the description, someplace, you must tell them about the stipend for the, for the gas, right?
We usually negotiate.
Is that part of the negotiation when we do that?
Yeah.
It's not any part of the description of the.
No, we, we don't typically put anything on that, we will usually have a, a salary range that we put on it, and.
And that goes along with gas, the vehicle, right?
Yeah. All right, so if we could have this brought back at the next meeting, kind of in, kind of in the format, but. The discussion of public works bonds.
Okay, so we have the equipment and the building bond, and we have some monies left over in both of those bonds. Sean says what we do need is, we need a generator for the building. So, a couple of questions that I had, um, the first is, uh, which of the bonds are we gonna take the generator out of? The second is, do we wanna put whatever's left over back in as principal, and the third question is, do we wanna use some of the equipment money to purchase a lawnmower?
So. Which, which, where were we planning on taking the generator out of?
I think it was out of the building.
The building, which we still have thirty-four thousand left in.
Should make sense to be taking it out of there.
Okay. So, generator out of that.
We'll need to get a price on, I've been acquiring some information.
And when, when do we, when do we need to actually close this out?
Uh, it's not something that we close out, um, it's, you know, the sooner we put it back in, the sooner we, you know, it lowers our interest, but, I mean.
We stop paying interest on that amount, and.
Yeah, there's no date by which we have to do it. Which area, where are you gonna take the generator?
Generator would be from the building bond. And, um, board's thoughts as far as mower, um, looking at the, the contracts for mowing, we are currently spending eleven thousand dollars a year to contract out mowing, including the cemeteries. I believe the cemetery's is thirty-six hundred, and that, that one's a little, that one's a question, we've gotta determine whether that's worth rolling into public works or not, 'cause, uh, cemeteries are very labor intensive.
I would say no on the cemeteries, but everything else, yeah.
So then we're talking about seventy, about seventy-four hundred dollars a year that we spend in mowing. What, estimate of a, of a good mower, um, any idea what a good mower would be?
I mean, if you're looking for something that you're gonna get longevity out of, you're gonna be.
Twelve fifteen grand.
Twelve fifteen. What about the discussion of timing and personnel and stuff, 'cause we are gonna be going into, um, a year where we have crew members with vacation, we only got four guys, as we speak, we only got four guys on the crew right now, um, and generally, we need a minimum of four.
What's the, what's the man hour commitment for, for the mowing?
One, one thought I had wondered is, do, do we hire a part-timer at a lower rate than we'd be paying, paying in normal, so possibly.
And open you up for another laborer.
And that, that's what their job would be, is to go around and do the mowing, that was, I thought I'd had, and, um.
Looking at how many things are out of mow, too, I mean, is it like a constant, like, as soon as you finish over here, it's time to start back over here, or how does that work?
Yeah, and I haven't, myself, I haven't looked at the mowing in town, so I can't, I really can't answer that.
I think before we make a decision to, to buy a mower, I think we have to look at how much we're having mowed, what the potential manpower time is, and, rather than just sort of going, oh, yeah, we should.
Yeah, 'cause there are times. Inky anky would be willing to give us any of that or not.
He might.
Damn it, who knows? Will it might, who knows?
It might not.
Yeah, I, I really, I mean, you're looking at losing it, so.
There are times when you're gonna have, depending on what the weather does, you're gonna hear the grass grow, so you're gonna be doing.
And there's times it's gonna be hot, and you, and you're hot and dry, and it's not gonna grow.
Some weeks you might not, I mean, you might have to be able to go three weeks or something without doing it, other times you might have to do it every week.
Right, and what's the scope of it, is, are they currently, like, mowing the ball fields and that kind of thing?
The ball, uh, well, this one over here, probably.
No, just, I don't mean the school.
Not the school, so, so the property here, I believe the fire station property, uh, Eureka, uh, the Eureka Center, uh, would include the public works, which has never been on our contract, it would include the river park and the runaround pond park.
And the gazebo, right?
Gazebo. I think one guy's gonna be busy, that's a lot for one guy.
I know in Lisbon they do, they do a lot, and one guy can go out with a front mower, and he can blow out a lot, a lot of boys in a day.
Right, it depends on how much, if, if there's a lot of hand mowing, then it's gonna take a lot, if, which is why the cemetery, I don't think it's worth it.
What about though, the truck, you know, obviously we'd have to get a trailer that you can holler around on, and now is the truck that we would hopefully use to haul that, is that gonna be in use elsewhere?
There's a couple of them that are gonna be.
There's gonna be a couple that'll be in use, but.
So with this, I mean, if we can keep this bond open for a while longer, um, with the, 'cause we have twenty thousand available still in the bond, and wait until we have, uh, until we've hired the road commissioner and have the discussion then, the only thing is, we have to be really think, 'cause we don't, we're no longer under con.
Right.
We have to, we have to make up a decision fairly quickly.
And we have to accommodate for that in, in the budget process.
It would help the budget, too, in a way.
I mean, you're, you're not looking at an immediate return, it's probably gonna take three or four years to, to return back and actually start saving us money.
Yeah. As far as ink, you know?
If, if, um, I was still going to be. If, if I was still going to be the department head, I would be asking the board to hold off for this year, see if we can do a one-year contract, and then we can get a better handle on, you know, the man-hours and the time involved, and just all the different pieces that can go into the puzzle.
So, would you suggest then just closing out this bond and either looking at doing it capital?
We've got the money there now, the bond, I mean, if I go back next year.
We're not going to get it again next year.
I'm going to go, the budget committee's going to say, no way.
You could do a capital purchase, but you're not going to want to bond it, you're going to have to pay for it outright.
The money's there.
Yeah, but it wasn't part of the discussion throughout the committees either, and we've been, we were very careful about that when we went through.
Getting extra equipment, yeah.
All the five committees that worked on the whole, the whole project, too.
Yeah, I know that question was asked by the committees and by other people over time, and I think even some of those public committees, so. I think maybe we could hold back just a little bit right now, see if we can get a little more information on that, and then make a decision later on. Even if it came down to, it looks as though we should buy a mower and then put somebody on it. If we've got that money still available right now, even if we bought the mower and we didn't use it, everything, you know, have it.
Just have it sitting there for next year.
You know, if we had it, bought it in July or August, then worst-case scenario, you know, we'd be that much ahead and wouldn't have to go back and ask for it.
Yeah.
Okay, the only thing is, we are going-
Still going to mow a lot for the worst.
From now until when we decide to close this out, if we decide to turn twenty thousand back in, as long as, as long as we're holding it, we're paying interest on it.
Well, we can get some prices on a mower, a couple of mowers, too, and see where that range is, what we want, and then that'll give us a better idea as well. I mean, we don't have to take six, eight months to do it, we can, some of the stuff we can get, you know, in the next couple of months.
If we're not going to do that, we're going to want to be putting this, putting this year out to bid very shortly.
Right. You know, another piece of that is, you know, we might want to hear it out on town floor a little bit, too, you know, to see what people's, because, I mean, they may, rather we turn the money back in and show that we didn't spend all that we could have. It's hard to say.
Well, actually, we haven't, we, we actually bonded this, all, both of these out for less than what we originally thought.
Sure.
So we actually have dropped it a fair amount.
Sure.
We did pretty well with that.
I could go either way.
Well, I guess maybe we go on status quo for now, and if we can get a couple of, if we can get an idea of how much those would cost in the next two to four weeks, and then we can determine whether we need to put it out to bid.
I can, I can, I can help you on that.
John, dear place, check out, come get out or whatever.
Yeah.
Get an idea of how many hours get put into, uh-
Just to be fair.
Yeah. That's definitely a good question, is how, how long does it take to mow them, and how many, how often do you have to do it?
I agree with getting a better handle on it first.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you can get a huge mower, sixteen-inch mower, that can do a lot of stuff fast, but it may not be the right size mower for all the applications.
Right.
It's falling around the trees.
Yeah.
Good exercise for you.
We'll get you a ten-inch push.
No motor.
Line trimmer, go, about the line.
Okay, so for now, we won't take any action on that, other than get more information. Town report dedication. We actually have passed out a new version of something in here. Looking back through deaths in town over during two thousand fourteen, one, one person stands out as far as the commitment that he had given to Durham, and that's John Ackerman. Somebody had already taken the time to write up, dedication write-ups that we can look at. If anybody else has any other thoughts on who that we, who we could dedicate to, I'd be open to that. One note in here was that some people were interested in seeing the town report dedicated to Charlie Larabee because of the years that he put in for the town, too. The only thing is, he actually passed in two thousand fifteen, and would actually be more appropriate to go on next year's, I think.
Agreed.
Any thoughts on dedicating it to John, and also if we do, the write-up here?
That's by Mr. Bo.
Russ, yes.
And he helped, I guess, the widow.
Yeah, he, he worked with John's widow on this, and he worked closely with John on the planning board for many years.
Motion.
I'm looking for motion, thoughts, anything.
It looks fine.
Looks good.
Yeah, okay, so, motion.
I would move that we, the dedication for John Ackerman in our town report, and use the write-up that was provided.
One second.
Any discussion? One thing is, could, is it, would it be possible to get a picture if we don't?
Yeah, Russ is going to-
Okay. All in favor? Motion carries. Next up is a discussion on shared agreement. When we were met a while ago, a few, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the agreement that Cumberland and Pownell had sharing equipment, and we have that agreement here that we could use at least during the interim, while we're searching for a new road commissioner.
And that agreement there, showed, coming up to the table right now, is based on just a piece of equipment going to the other town with the other town's operator.
Right.
I've got an email here from Sherri Clutier at MMA that states if the operator goes with a piece of equipment, then we don't need that. Don't need to have that agreement.
Right.
I mean, we can have, but we don't need it at that point.
And how does it generally work? If Pownell's grader is doing something in Durham, does a Pownell operator come over, or if our-
Generally with the grader, yes.
And one of our pieces of equipment goes to Pownell, and one of our guys runs it?
Yeah, usually that's what happens.
Did they, did we get an answer on how it works if a Pownell employee is operating the Pownell piece of equipment within Durham and something happens?
I did not do any research on that, I think Scott was working on that.
Okay.
I know, and this is, this is more assumption than anything, but I do know it happens all over, so.
It's just more, I think it would be good for us to actually know what the, what the consequences would be, who takes it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, as far as not even the equipment operator, but as far as the labors, you know, the labor part, Ron goes over and blows his knee out on Pownell, do we got to pay for it? Does Pownell pay for it?
Right, and I believe Scott was the one that was going to look into that, I don't know the answer to that.
It's hard to think for us to bite, that he's over there working, and he blows his knee out, and the town of Durham has to pay for it working Pownell.
I guess I got something to say. I guess if Durham Fire goes to Pownell to fight a fire, and something happens to Durham Fire, then who's going to pay for that? It's a mutual aid compact, it's the same thing as fire.
But we don't, we don't want to allow it, we mean, we got plenty of work for you doing Durham, and a lot of it hasn't been done, and-
But I mean, it's, you know.
That's what we want to see in the taxpayers. That's what the taxpayers want to see, they want to see some work done, and I don't need your hurt over there. Plain and simple. I said, I don't need your hurt over in Pownell. I need you working here.
I think that's, you know, something for the boards to discuss. It works out great, being able to work together, getting more done in a more timely fashion, so, but that's for the boards to work out.
I don't think it's any different than mutual aid for fire service. It's neighbor helping neighbor.
Everybody has their opinion.
I think a lot of that stuff happens all over, so I'm sure there's a, there's an answer to the question about who pays for it. I mean, if it's a shared service and it's working, and it's, and it's working for both towns or three towns, how many if it's in there? I mean, that's, I'm sure there's an answer to make sure who's covered for whatever insurance.
Yeah, well, we got to make sure, because we have no agreement in writing at all.
Like they said over there, as long as the grader can come up here, as long as we get out of sun first, and that would make sense, so it'd be the same way if our stuff happened to go over there, as long as our stuff done first, I don't, I think that's just common. You wouldn't do that. Right. As soon as they go out to hometown, for you to handle. I don't, I don't, I think we'll be, we just need to get those answers, those questions answered, and I think we'll be fine.
Get in writing.
I just, on the comparison of the fire department, I don't know what the agreement says, but I'm assuming it probably is not substantially different than fire department helping out a fire department. However, in that case, with most, most all the time, there's a written mutual aid agreement establishing who's responsible for the equipment, who's responsible for the personnel, and stuff like that.
We don't have anything that specific yet.
As well.
Yeah, we don't have anything that specific yet, and that's what we need to look at.
And if the board wanted, or if both boards wanted, I've got a document from Great Port Council of Governments that we put together for the towns that were working in the same manner there, maybe something to look at, and as we move forward, and get it, I think I have the electronic version, email, so yeah.
Okay. Anything we need to do on this, then? Okay. I, if possible, could we move G until after the executive session?
Till after the executive session?
Well, nope. Only because the executive session directly, directly relates to, yes. Yes, directly relates to this top item, and I was wondering if we could move that until afterwards.
Okay.
It's a board.
I'm sure not.
Yeah. H, clarification of online commitment book.
Oh, you want me to take this one, huh?
Yeah.
So, I guess at the last meeting, you guys approved putting an online commitment book online. And John had put online what we had in our town report. So he had taken the report that we put in the report, and he had put it online, which is not the technical commitment, and we're just looking for clarification so that we can put the actual commitment online. The difference being, first of all, the commitment is a legal document. What he has online now could not be the correct figures, because sometimes those things change as Donna goes along, and so the commitment is the commitment. And the other thing is, the commitment has, the only addition that it has in information is it has mailing addresses as well. The rest of the information is all the same.
So, actually, the town report had addresses as well?
It had the addresses of the properties.
Okay.
It doesn't have the actual mailing addresses, but in Durham-
It's a lot, oh, usually it's the same.
Most of them are the same.
But that was one of the objections that people have historically had to putting all of that online, was that-
Yeah.
The information from the annual report, the annual report itself is online.
And that basically has your addresses as well.
Right, but it doesn't necessarily have mailing addresses, and it's not searchable, which the new system is individually searchable.
It's actually, it is searchable, you can, what he, what he has put up now is searchable, it's a PDF, you can search by name or by lot, I'd number.
Nowadays, you can Google anyone and find probably six results, and it's probably going to have somebody's address and their phone number, no matter what, so.
I think when I was actually, when I was voting on it at the last time, I was thinking of what was actually, we called it the commitment, but was actually in the town report, because that's what we were trying to basically replace. The, the numbers, the, the information is pretty much similar. There was one other difference, and I can't remember, it had to do with, oh, the, the actual tax account number is online, is in the commitment as well, and it's not in the book. The commitment is about three hundred and some pages long. The, what was in the town report is only about fifty to sixty pages long, so, I guess.
I would propose that, I know that there was, at least it has been, it's my understanding that there was some pretty heated discussion on town floor about this issue in years past.
There was.
And whether maybe that, that place for it.
There was one place, but that was actually, we were doing a lot more than what we're asking. We were, number one, it had a decent cost associated with it in a yearly cost, and number two, it was everything within the tax account, including the pictures, and it wasn't just, it wasn't just a little blurb, it was pictures and other, other descriptions of the house.
Tax cards, actually.
So, that was a much more detailed version of this. I mean, we could, as far as the commitment part, we could do a straw poll at a town meeting, we could go with what is already in the town report, and is already on the website now, it has been on the website for the last two or three years, anyway. We could go, we could continue, go with that, and then we could do a straw poll or something at the town meeting if we wanted to.
One of the reasons for having the commitment on the website is that we get a lot of phone calls from banks that are asking us for this information, and that would cut down on the phone calls. We get ten, fifteen phone calls a day from banks and from real estate agents asking us this information, which is public information, and then we tell them.
So that, that was specifically addressed when the town meeting was up, and there was a definite, at that, at that time, there was a definite feeling from the floor that they didn't care about that, because they didn't want to make, they didn't see any need to make it any easier for the banks, and they were, and they were saying, well, does the, can the office staff get the work done? And, I mean, yes, they get their work done, and so, okay, that's not, so that was, that was definitely-
That's kind of how I remember it, yeah.
Yeah, so, that would, unless, unless the feeling has changed, that was, that was definitely not a reason that the town saw for putting it on.
I have no objection to it, I understand that it's public record, I have no problem with it, I just hesitate to, to, for the board, to vote in something that the town has, has expressed a very specific dislike for.
I see this as different from what they were, this particular thing is different from what they were expressing their dislike from, but it's also similar. There were, there were two other factors, the money factor and the amount of information factor that were involved in that, in that discussion, and so, I guess, what was, when you took, when the other members took the vote, what was your thinking that we were voting on?
I thought we was voting on just, just that commitment part that was in the middle of the, of the war.
Right.
And that's the way I understood it.
Right, that was what I understood.
Yeah, me, too.
The basic stuff that's still public knowledge as it is, whether it's on the web or written down in that paper.
So for now, I say that's what we put on, because that's what, I think, every, each, that's what we thought we were voting on, and didn't realize there was a semantic that the commitment was actually something different. Different, and we can either bring this up as a, as an article on town floor, without a cost associated with it, and we can show them the difference of what's, what's up there now and what would be up there, and let them at least give their opinion. It would, it would most likely be a non-binding, but I wouldn't suggest going against it.
Well, it's not a bad idea to bring it up, so that they can see that, that's a good idea.
Yeah, and we can, we can show them exactly what the difference is. Okay, so I don't believe we actually need a vote, because we've already, we've clarified what our vote was. I is fire capital budget. Last night, there was, we had discussed this, and, but it never made it onto our budget paper, the twelve thousand dollars for exterior painting, replacing wood trim, suppression hood in the kitchen, and security cameras. And also, last night, as we were discussing it, there was some question as to what would actually constitute capital, a capital project. And what, specifically, I think the painting was specifically questioned.
There were questions on it.
I, I believe the security cameras could be considered capital, because that's something that hasn't been there. The hood, hood possibly could, depending on the cost of it to replace and the expected life. Do we have the break?
But I did actually wanted to ask the chief, because I know that's on here, too, the forty thousand payment versus the actual payment that's due.
Yeah, that was the other one.
And at one point, I vaguely recall, and I could absolutely be wrong, that you were saying that by making the smaller payment, rather than the forty thousand, the making, the thirty-three and change that's actually due, that allows- that allowed you to get a little bit caught up in, as the, as the capital plan went out. It was able to make up some of the.
To me, I definitely think as far as what we do for a payment, a lot of it is contingent upon what we actually put in there. If you take a look at what was presented for the capital plan, I believe the board has recommended fifty, however, the budget committee has recommended forty. If the budget committee is recommending forty going in there, I definitely would not recommend that they make a forty thousand dollar payment. I'd recommend that they go with the thirty-three thousand and go off with the full term. Because the way I restructured that, you're talking, and it, we look at it and we say it's seven thousand dollars, but it's not the seven thousand or the short-term impact. It has a ripple effect and becomes a long-term impact, because it throws you off seventeen thousand, and fourteen thousand, and twenty-one thousand. They should work your way out. But, yeah. To me, it depends upon what we put in for money as to what we do. And based on our conversation when we met that night, I had actually originally represented it at the thirty-three. But after our conversation about moving the apparatus out, trying to go with the forty, I restructured it. And then I tried to paint a picture out further, just so I could see what it did to us really long-term, the fifteen-year range.
Your recollection was correct, but after our discussion, he went back and reworked, pushing the engine out one year and so on. And by doing that, he felt more comfortable with the forty thousand.
The recommendation, that your best recommendation kind of depends on whether or not, which, which number gets, gets accepted.
To me, my, obviously, my recommendation is to put the fifty in, do the forty thousand payment, move the engine out. After I went back and looked at it, that, but going back to, no, let's move the engine up. Well, that, actually, without looking, having, having the advantage of looking at it, moving the engine up, that, I think off the top of my head is like a sixty thousand dollar payment was what I had allocated in there. So with that being in sixteen instead of seventeen, we really had to do thirty-three to kind of prepare for that. But if we move that out that year, and do the higher payment, and continue with the recommendation for the amount to put into it and everything. And that, that's actually what I, it's pretty amazing when you're just shifting one little thing over a couple of years, or forward a couple of years, or changing a number, the formulas are all live, it's pretty amazing what it actually, the end impact.
So you, Ruth, you looked up what it would save us in interest?
Yeah, there's a sheet in your pocket. Original amortization schedule with forty thousand dollar payment, like thirty-three thousand. It should be right in front of all the other.
In the book?
Oh, it should be right in front of this page.
Okay.
One more.
So moving it up with the forty thousand, save us fourteen, seventeen, fifty-nine. So, you know, a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, I'm not sure that's substantial in the long run.
It's two hundred dollars a year roughly, a little bit more than two hundred dollars a year. Spread out over this original six years that we would have paid.
So at least we can tell the budget committee Thursday night, because they were asking.
So, is it our reco? I, with the fact that the budget committee is recommending forty, I, my personal opinion is that we keep it at the thirty-three, because we don't know which one, which one's gonna pass.
Right.
So, now about the twelve thousand, do we have a breakout on that?
Wrong one.
I think.
Yep.
Wrong one.
Also wrong.
What you're really dealing with is the, the top page has the number on it for the hood. The rest of the pages behind that are supporting documentation till you get to the final page. The final page is an estimate for the painting and. Doesn't include the cameras, I don't have any written documentation for the camera. What I was told was based on the cameras that were being recommended, is if you take on the painting, if you take the additional interior painting out. It covers the camera. Number others given, oh, the fifteen hundred dollars in the camera.
I guess I'll leave it on the board. What is, do you feel this is capital, capital projects? Or is it something that should be built into a maintenance budget?
Paint and maintenance, more or less, but.
I know, I know, and I think we, that's, we need to relook at it. I know in history-wise, painting has actually always come out of the capital, and we need to.
What, what part of the station do you have to paint?
The whole exterior.
Part, part of it's brick, I mean.
Painting the block, not the vinyl siding, obviously, but any of the blocks on, all the way around the station, it's painting all the blocks.
Peak's got vinyl too, right?
The what?
There's a peak?
Yeah, the, the peak is actually vinyl siding.
Is the trim wrapped, all the trim, is any of the trim wrapped, or is it all?
No, there's some of it that's redone in the composite.
Composite, there we go.
But, yeah, if I say that enough times, I'm fine again, I remember it. But some of it has been, was redone back along with the composite. So it's about a third of it is done with composite, the rest of it's wood, and it's starting to rot.
I was, for some reason, I was thinking when the vinyl was put on, we had wrapped that trim, but I guess not.
You what?
I was thinking that we had had it wrapped.
No, we actually replaced some with composite.
You don't happen to know what the general accounting definition of capital is?
I would think that stuff that has to be done periodically, like painting, is, would fall under routine maintenance. It's not a, it's not new.
Capital improvement.
But I don't know if there's a, like.
I guess, if I may, I'll jump in there with my thought process on it. It's actually municipal government has got to a point where a lot of times they will actually do financing package on replacement of air packs and things like that. So I guess what I'm gonna throw out there is, what do we actually call maintenance versus replacement? Or new equipment or capital projects? To me, what we're debating is really terminology. Isn't in reality replacement of the engines or replacement of the rescue? Are we maintaining a fleet of apparatus if we really want to come down to the brass tacks or fleet of equipment? So, and I think what we're struggling with is the terminology, that we're looking at possibly transferring the funds from the fire rescue capital account. It's always been represented, actually, if you go back to your old copies that I've given the board back in time, it's always been represented in there to do the painting, the paving, things like that. To me, it's the only way, and I, I think you're gonna run into it with public works over time, is some of the larger maintenance projects, you either have to have a separate article, which, that's what this does, is it's a separate article to vote on this piece. Then you have to decide where you're gonna get the funds. To me, the logical way to do it, maybe we need to change the title of the account, but the logical way to do it to me is to have a savings plan. I think that's probably how we all try to manage our own household, is we know we're gonna have to paint our house, and we're gonna hire it done, we try to save up to do that. It may not be an account called a capital plan, but we're planning it and working it into our long-term financial strategy. I guess that's how I look at it. And I think it's terminology that we're really debating.
I, I think if you, if you take, if you was, you've got this broke down, if you was to do, say, the AZAC trim this year, just, this is just a thought, but this isn't, I'm not suggesting we do it this way. If you was to do that, say, well, I might spend two thousand dollars on fixing the trim, I think that's kind of a maintenance thing. You know, if you're gonna add interior painting, that's kind of a maintenance thing. I think if you're gonna add all these together, and they're gonna last X amount of time, I think it's more of a capital type of thing than. I think you're looking at a larger sum.
And looking at what?
I think if you're taking it and you're gonna lump all together, and all together, this work is gonna last five years, ten years, whatever, whatever it's supposed to be last, then I think it's more of a capital thing. If you're breaking it down individually, you're gonna do fifteen hundred this year for Peyton, two thousand for the AZAC trim next year, that to me is maintenance.
And the easier question may just be, why can we call the auditors and ask them? Because ultimately, no matter what any of us think, we just don't want to get nailed on our audit. It doesn't really matter what our opinions are about it.
Because if you're gonna do all this stuff this year, and you're saying that this work is gonna last six years, five years, whatever it is, then I think you're looking at more of a capital type of thing, that's what it looks like to me.
You guys are gonna call, I, I'd recommend calling and looking at the whole picture. Because to me, what we're debating is terminology, actually, what I was looking at is Keith had just looked it up on his phone and stuff. Otherwise, in the title of our account, it definitely fits into what we're trying to do here. We're trying to maintain a capital asset, am I summarizing that correctly?
Capital expenditure is an amount spent to acquire or improve a long-term asset, such as equipment or buildings.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, this, yeah, far as building, building something new.
Right, the argument would be that it's not improvement, it's maintaining what you already have.
The budget's gonna ask, what'd you spend your maintenance money on? Why don't you maintain it a year later?
I guess what I would throw out there is that you gotta look at, you have a bunch of other things that really aren't listed there. We purchased all of our turnout gear and our SCBAs in a grant in two thousand and six. When it comes time to upgrade SCBAs, they're all gonna, turnout gear, it's gonna depend on use and the activity of the member. But in S, the SCBAs, they're gonna all become non-compliant within the same, same timeframe, couple of years apart at the most. They're gonna become non-compliant. And before or after that timeframe, depending on what the community decides to do, they're gonna start to wear out. And then SCBA on that ballparking that we haven't bought for, for quite a while, but I actually did, is right around five thousand dollars for the air pack itself, so we're talking twenty of those. So there's different items like that to me that.
And that would be.
We shouldn't focus just on this one situation, we should focus, because I would assume public works.
But that would be, something like that would actually definitely be a capital expenditure, because you're purchasing a new piece of equipment, and it's expected, life expectancy is a certain period of time, and, and things like that. Where if you're, if you're painting, you're not, you're not improving, you're, you're.
Maintaining.
You're ma, you're keeping what you have. When you buy a new fire engine, or you buy a new public works truck, you are improving, you, and you're buying a new piece of equipment, you're improving, and you retire the old one. And I, that's, and we may be getting into, we are getting into semantics here and so on. It's, it's a and this question hasn't come up before. We've done, but just because we've always done it one way doesn't mean it's the correct way to do it. And that's why we sometimes have to have, have the discussion. And I, I know, I mean, if we had to start putting this into the budget, it would, your budget, next year, you'll be coming, be asking for twelve thousand dollars, or, or six thousand and a half of it next year, and, and they're gonna say, why is your budget going up again? And it's, it's a never-ending fight.
It can be, it says companies can capitalize land and equipment improvements, as long as they aren't a part of the normal maintenance. And they determine normal maintenance by things that you do on a yearly basis. So if you weren't to paint on a yearly basis, and generally accepted order is, is five hundred dollars. For most, for us, I think it might be five thousand. So anything over that amount that you don't do on a yearly basis for maintenance could be capitalized, was, is my take on it. But I can call the auditors and ask.
So we're not, we may not have a real good answer for Thursday night.
Well, I can call them tomorrow.
Yeah.
Our email's done.
We'd have to make a decision on the fly in front of them.
Yep. They were doing it last night, they asked us. I mean, because you, your hood and stuff, someone's gonna last probably longer than your paint job and stuff, you know, that's, you hope.
Well, if we want to get down to it, they're actually replacing pieces on it, they're not just maintaining them.
I mean, that's why I'm saying, if you're breaking this out, you can look at it two different ways. That's why I say, it depends on how it's gonna be presented. If you're saying there's a lump sum, it, to me, it moves more into a capital. And if it's broke out, doing some this year, some next year, then it's, I think it goes into more maintenance. Granted, if, if you let the building get in such a disarray that you have to spend a lot of money to do it all at once, and then, then that's a different problem, because we haven't been maintaining it regularly like we should, so. And I'm not saying that's what you guys have done, I mean, I know you regularly maintain it, just make sure we fit this in where it needs to be.
So we'll wait for an answer on Thursday and make a decision on the fly?
Yep, in front of them. Oh, we can meet in the other room. If we don't have to meet in front of them, do it.
Well, we have to, we have to meet, meet in public.
Yeah.
We'll meet in the parking lot.
All right. Next item is Spirit of America Award. I got an email a couple of weeks ago. Every year, we're asked to nominate somebody for Spirit of America Award.
I'm busy.
You're right, there's a letter from.
Yeah, given, I, let's see. So, this, the, your Board of Selectment is asked to pick a, the local person, project, or group to receive the two thousand and fifteen Durham Spirit of America Foundation Tribute for Outstanding Community Service using your own criteria and to honor the recipient, presumably with a resolution or proclamation at your annual town meeting. The past several years, we've done it. Past recipients have been Boy Scout troop, the Eureka Center, the Fire Department. And this year, we had, we actually had a member of the community suggest someone. And we'll, I'd like to kind of, we don't have to make the decision tonight, but put it out there for people, for, for the selectmen to think about if we wanna honor the one that's suggested by the towns, the town resident, or if one of the other selectmen had another person or group that would, that you feel would be deserving of the honor. Typically, what we've, we've given, we've given a certificate at the town meeting, honored them there. And then in June, up at the county courthouse, there's a ceremony for all the recipients to receive the award from the group that does it.
So do you want a motion, or do you just want us to put this under advisement?
I guess it's up to the board, if you're, if the board is happy with this nominee, we could, we could take the vote tonight.
I am. Is that a motion? Let me, oh wait, I'm still reading. No, I'm fine. I make the motion, we accept the, the name that's been brought in front of us for the Spirit of, of Durham Awards.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Alright. Departments and committees, Board Commissioner, do you have anything to mention?
Your last report.
I thought we had something in contract that on your last report, you would bring China Rose for the board.
It very well could've been. I didn't read the fine print, so. We can get out afterwards.
You're gonna terminate the talk here?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have to let you go, yeah.
Really, just a couple of things. I had oversight, I believe, on my part with comp time, compensation time for the crew. I was under the assumption that they were allowed to accrue eighty hours on the books, and a question came from Town Hall, and made us look back at it, realize that was forty. So we do have crew members with more than forty hours on the books. And given, given the winter that we've had, it probably would help the budget if we allowed them to accrue more comp time. But that's completely up to the board. I mean, we do have members that have more than forty hours on the books.
I just, they'll just sort you time later on, right?
Yeah.
Is, we, we're only allowed twenty-four in Lisbon.
Is, is there a Bureau of Labor standard on how much you're allowed to let?
Um, I don't believe so. I know when I was in Yarmouth, we were allowed eighty. But, you know, like I said, as it is now, whatever the board wants to do, we've got, we've got employees that have more than forty right now. We have some that probably don't have quite forty.
I know in Lisbon, I'm allowed twenty-four. That's all we're allowed. That's so we don't run into short.
I don't know. I feel like forty was, you know, we, we talked quite a bit about that, and then we can, Personnel Committee.
The only, I guess the only thing I'd like to throw in there, maybe a couple of things is, you know, it will, I mean, there are times when you run into a lot of overtime in a situation like this, and, and selectmen or councils may come down and say, can we, can I guys take comp time for this? But that's, again, it's up to the board to make that decision. And it could be just a one-time.
And at this point, I mean, we've, we've granted, we've actually allowed the comp time at this point for some of them to go over. So we can't do it, I mean, we, by state statute, we've gotta, we've gotta compensate them for what they've... So the question is going forward, the ones that have extra, do we allow them to accrue anymore? Do we have, do we want to, do we want to make it so that they have to get down below forty before they can accrue?
And are they accruing hour for hour, or is it at time and a half?
It's time and a half.
Time and a half.
It's all overtime.
Yeah.
So, the way it helps the budget is you don't have to pay the overtime, but it means that you lose, you, you lose the employee.
We're on all summer.
Which if we're only four man crew, like you said many times to us, so, yeah.
But if we're allowed to swap crew members back and forth, that can make up the difference.
I had like the idea of putting an expiration date on it, but my understanding is you can't do that, so...
You can't, and it, because they, 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 well, the only way you could put an expiration date on it, on it is if you actually paid, you know, paid it out when it reached that amount of time.
I don't, I don't mean that it would be gone. I mean that you would say, alright, this Friday, have a good day off.
Well, you, I don't believe you can dictate when they take off, can you?
Right, that's what, mostly it's saved up to summertime anyways, that's what I'm...
And to take a day off is not a bad thing.
I think forty's the...
Two hundred and forty is the labor.
Two hundred and forty? Okay, so we're, we're not, not even anywhere near that, but, uh, so it's, seems like the consensus is that we wanna keep it at forty, and for the ones that are over right now, they have to get, get down below, or is that the...
The only problem I have with that is that then, you know, you've got a small department, and, and some people, it's treating the department...
Pay him, pay him, pay him all down to forty.
And I would, you know, my proposal would be, yes, it was an oversight, and for this winter plowing season, we made a mistake. From next plowing season, we won't make the same mistake, but leave it the way it is for right now, so that everybody is treated equally.
We only got five more months of policy.
My, my thought on that wasn't, wasn't to change the policy, just looking at this, this one case.
I, I think that's probably the way to go about it, is to keep going the way we already have for this year and make sure we're firm on it next year. Cause that's true, how to, you know, if you got...
So we just tell them, what are you trying to say? The guys that don't have, like, let's know if someone has. Eighty. So you got one guy at eighty, another guy's at sixty, so we allow him to max out eighty like the other guy? I mean, we gotta play fair, yeah. Either we gotta pay him, we gotta set an, an hour here for, so one guy don't get less above.
And that's, I think, was the idea, is that just let him keep going.
Instead of saying, okay, now, you've got eighty, so you get your eighty. Well, you've only got sixty, but we're capping you at sixty, cause that's over forty. You've only got thirty-six, so you only get to get your forty.
So either let them max out to eighty, or you pay them off and I'll bring them all down to forty or sixty.
Max everybody out to eighty and do it right next, you know, stay on top of it next year.
Next calendar or next year.
Next year, you might not have any snow, so you don't have to worry about it.
I hope we don't have this much.
It's gonna flush, yeah.
We're all done with snow now for this year.
That's right.
It's almost March first.
Is that a motion? No more snow?
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it, too. Capping it eighty for now, and we'll look closer, pay more attention for next year.
I, I'm on board with that.
So is that a motion to temporarily cap?
I would guess I have one more follow-up question for Sean. I'm making the assumption that this really only becomes an issue during plowing season, in the summer.
Correct. And we could even, you know, we could put a date on it too, you know?
Up through April fifteenth, that's when, that's when the plowing contract used to end, so...
No snow on like April eighteenth.
Be ready.
But what we'd be doing is we're capping it at eighty now, and then we're putting an end date that, even if it does snow on April third or April sixteenth, you know, you're not comping it.
Yeah, you, a- after that, you have to be down below forty before you can start accruing it again.
Right.
Make it fair for everybody.
Anybody wanna make the motion, or is that gonna end up being, I mean...
I think that's, I think that's right. I think that shows. You've, you've got the wording right.
So I move that we temporarily allow public works to accrue up to eighty hours of comp time. Sun setting on April fifteenth. After April fifteenth, forty hours will be the limit.
Second.
Any discussion? And did I get the, did I get the motion right?
It sounded to me...
For some reason, I thought I missed something, so, okay. All in favor? Motion carries.
Um, and the only other thing I had is, in looking at the temperatures next week, it looks like we may be in a little bit of a warming trend.
Cut it out.
It looks like.
So ten degrees?
But, you know, when it starts warming up, things are gonna happen fast out on the roads. I know Yarmouth is posting, I believe, on the ninth. So we're gonna wanna think about getting the ball rolling on, on being ready to post the roads. I know that there has to be a motion from the board to do that.
Do, do you think we can wait, uh, do you think it can wait till the next meeting?
I think so. I think so. I was gonna say, um, March ninth, but I believe the next meeting's the following day, so we can see what, see what things look like at that point.
I think it's gonna be early this year.
It's gonna happen quick too, cause the sun's up.
Both are already starting to get there.
And then I'll turn that over to interim at that point, but I just wanted to throw it out there, so you guys are thinking about it. That's it.
Alright, any questions for Sean? Thank you very much for what you've, for what you've done.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Give us some good deals on asphalt, yeah?
Did you have anything? Okay. Fire chief?
I have a written report. I do have a bunch of research. First one going around is, uh, oh, figures. What went in for the storm damage from the January wizard? Just a summary sheet. It's been submitted. It's in the review process. If it all, if it all makes a cut, it, the town's eligible, off the top of my head, I think it's for, well, thankfully ninety percent of it's coming back. However, usually it's seventy-five percent federal and fifteen percent state. And the state's check usually, you go long ways out before you ever see the state's check, if you even do the, uh, but anyways, those are the summary sheets for what had been submitted. It, uh, the other thing that went around was I talked to you last time around about the, about the safer grant, and that I'd provide you with a copy of the narrative. Hopefully, they'll review it and give some...
No, but I'll pick yours later. You don't need to give it to me now.
Uh, it, uh, probably will, uh, review it and provide some constructive criticism. Constructive criticism on it. It, that's one of the things I did get out of the peer review process when I did go down and everything. People need to have the, their grant narratives proofread by a lot more people and a lot more thoroughly, and not necessarily all these people that are in favor of what's being put in. So anyways, hopefully you'll provide some feedback on some of it. Two other things that we ran into a situation where ISO, which controls insurance costs, it, uh, five miles from a fire station, they consider it unprotected structure, and it becomes no fire department. So what, cause all we prevented any issues from that was having first mutual aid, then automatic mutual aid. However, it, it transitioned recently towards, no, you'd have to have a written automatic mutual aid agreement. So just in case, so you know, in case you have any people calling it. We have gotten a copy of an auto aid agreement from ISO. They've gone out to any of the communities that we use for auto aid. But, uh, we use them all for mutual aid, but some of them we use for auto aid and the initial alarm, just to make sure that we have a fire department within five miles. And they're in some odd places that you would not expect to find them. But anyways, we've, we've gotten one back and it's been submitted, and it was the impacted residents that started the process and made us find this in the first place. The other one, I should have another one coming back, and that'll leave us tomorrow standing on that. Good thing I didn't wanna let you know is, uh, my recommendation to the board is to appoint Deputy Chief Lisa Gross and Deputy Chief Keith Russell, Lisa for rescue and Keith for fire. I don't know when you're gonna handle the appointments, but the corporation had their annual meeting and their elections, and both of them were re-elected to their positions. So the recommendation from the department is that you reappoint them to their positions. That's it.
Ken, Ruth, can you look up what we did last year for that? I, I don't remember if we did it with the normal April ones, or if we did it ahead of time. I think we may have done it ahead of time, but... And if we did, just have the appointments for the next meeting.
I actually think you did do it ahead of time.
Yeah, I, I kinda think so.
Been waiting for it by March when you made the appointments last time, rather than waiting till after town meeting was addressed. That's all I have. Any questions for the chief?
Alright, thank you. Code's enforcement officer's not here, and I don't believe we've got a written report either. Selectmen's comments, we have upcoming meetings here at the town office on Tuesday, March tenth, at six thirty PM, and Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, at six thirty PM. Budget meetings will be held Thursday, February twenty-sixth, at six PM here at the town office.
Talk to them, make sure it's coming.
Okay, and that's all I have for, uh, meeting announcements. I'd like to move that we go into executive session pursuant to one MRS A four oh five six A personnel, Fire Chief Personnel Matters. Second. All in favor? Motion carries.